I'm going to go ahead and call the Steward for the December 22nd, 2016 Board of Directors meeting for the Coast Mises Sanitary District. You all please rise and join us in looking at the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You can do the imocation. Dear God, thank you for the opportunity you give us to serve you and the people that we represent in our community. Thank you.
Matt first.
Director James Ferrellman.
President.
Assistant Secretary Arlene Schaefer.
Here.
Secretary Robert Uden.
Here.
Vice President Arthur Perry.
Here.
And President Michael Schaefer.
Here.
Thank you.
Any ceremonial matters this evening, Scott?
No, Mr. President.
Make communications.
None, Mr. President.
Thank you. Then we'll move to public comments. The time and place for members of the public to speak on items that are not on the agenda. We have Mr. Mosher wishing to speak into this minute.
Thank you, President Schaefer and members of the board. My name is Jim Mosher. I have two non-agenda comments. The first one was to follow up on your recent study session where there was some discussion of the timing of the induction of the new directors. And I wanted to point out, following that, you had a little bit, perhaps a little bit in Council this week as well. The district engineer was correct that there is a passage in the Elections Code that says that the new directors are to be sworn in always on the first Monday, first Friday in December following the election. However, there is a companion clause a couple of sections earlier than that in the Election Code that says that the county registrar of voters is supposed to certify all the special district elections on the Tuesday of that week, the Tuesday before the Friday. And because the unusual timing this year, the election came quite late in November, the certification didn't happen until the Tuesday after the Friday, instead of the Tuesday before. Whether that's just an oversight on the part of the registrar that they didn't realize that you put that before. And when the next time that will arise, I don't know, but I believe that's the reason for the calamity that happened itself again. And the second comment I wanted to follow up also to your study session, I mentioned that in spite of the well-intentioned redoing and consolidating the city of the district website, it still needs a little evaluation and work. And I'll explain later why I was looking that up. Just before the meeting, I was trying to verify in my recollection of what the rate structure was for the wastewater customers. I mean, I think a ratepayer, one of the most basic things they would be interested in is what the rates they have to pay. And I think on the new website, you'll find that information is surprisingly hard to find. So the five directors might themselves take a look at the website, see if they can find out what the current rates are. And that might make them understand why I think it's going to work. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay. Anyone else from the public?
Mr. President. Could I briefly?
Oh, I'm sorry. Please.
There is a, Mr. Mosher's comment is well taken on the oath matter, but the state law, really the problem is the state law, because the state law says not later than the Monday, before the first Friday in December, the county elections official shall declare the elected candidate or candidates. And then Elections Code 10554 says elective officers taint office at noon on the first Friday in December, next following the general district election. So there's a problem with the timing, and it's in the state law. And yeah, there's a little anomaly there that we try and schmooze each time, but we'll work through it, and if there's an adjustment needed in our code. Really, what needs to happen is the state law needs to get fixed. So we can do something later.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Can I adjust the rate structure for?
Please, Mr. Mosher.
It's actually under the Finance Department. It might be a little strange place to put it, but it's in the budget document as well, and it's in the financial statements. But the history of rates back to 1314 are under the Finance section.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
Our websites have been working in progress normally. I mean, you know, we're always looking for ways to improve it and make it more transparent and understandable. So we're not perfect, but we're going to get better.
Senator Lloyd. I was looking at Yahoo for the Coast Mises Sanitary District. They still have our old address, so everything's listed on their old address. So I don't know, is there a way to change that?
What did you find out?
Because I was looking at the head of the board docs, just to double check it.
Maybe it's because you're using Yahoo instead of main.
I'm not sure. I don't think I've seen that.
I have no idea.
Just for your reference.
Thank you. Okay. Then we'll move to the second calendar.
Move approval of consent calendar as presented.
Second. Motion in a second?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero for the second calendar. All right. No public hearings this evening, so Scott, we'll go right to your reports.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Delon Midway will be giving this report.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. At this time, it's appropriate for the Board of Directors to nominate and consider appointing new officers to our Board of Directors, as well as to the local, regional, and as well the statewide committees and organizations that you participate in. So if you would like to nominate and appoint our officers, we'll take those votes at this time.
Then I'll open the discussion for nominations.
I'd like to say so.
Go.
Okay. I think it would be great if we tried to do one year instead of two years for whoever gets on, because that way everybody would really have more of a chance to have these officers.
Okay. I guess I'd ask Alan, does our code say that offices, we can change offices whenever we like, can't we?
We can change our code.
Okay. Good. Good. Any other comments?
I'd like to make a nomination for the President, that's Michael Schaefer.
Second. Discussion.
I need a question. One year or two?
Needs to be two year for now.
It needs to be two, but we're going to have to bring it back to address what you said. Okay. Can we have that at a study session then to talk?
Sure.
How about changing that?
Yes.
Great. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I guess that passes unanimously. Nomination for Vice President? I'll nominate Art Perry for Vice President. Second.
I would like to nominate Jim Ferrell for Vice President.
Second.
Okay. We have a substitute motion for Jim.
Yes.
You look like you want to say something.
Well, at some point, I would mind being President again down the road.
Of course.
And it doesn't have to be now, or, you know, but so whatever the wishes are, the board is fine with me.
Okay.
My time is going to be tied up a lot more this next year. That's one of the reasons I've come back in a little bit. We haven't let the baby come in.
Babysitting more. I didn't know you were pregnant.
I was not pregnant. I'm already doing it two or three days a week. It could be worse.
All right. So the motion is for Jim Ferrell for Vice President. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Secretary?
I have to nominate Arlene Schaefer.
Okay. We have a motion. Second. Okay. We have a motion in a second on that position. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Assistant Secretary? I'll nominate Bob Wooten for Assistant Secretary.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Do we have to nominate the last director?
Director.
Then I'll nominate Art Curry to be Director.
I'll second it.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay. So we have our officers, and then in our study session, we'll talk about your proposals. Okay. Orange County San, or I'm sorry, Matt, clear. Next one.
The next position will be for the board member to represent the district on the Orange County Sanitation District Board, as well as the alternate.
I'll nominate Jim Ferrell to be the Orange County Sanitation District Director.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. I do not think Bob Wooten is the alternate. I'll second. Motion in a second. Any discussions or all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously as well.
Thank you. At this time, we need a representative for the Santa Ana River Flood Protection Agency, as well as the alternate.
I'd like to nominate Art Curry.
I'll second it.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That position passes unanimously as well. We need an alternate, correct?
Yes.
Nomination?
You know, I'm at the meeting for the Orange County San district. I know that's.
I'll nominate Jim Ferrell to be the alternate.
I don't know if we should do that, because he's already there, so.
Oh.
I don't want to put him in a bad position.
Yeah.
Oh, I got you.
He could be better.
I'll withdraw my motion.
I think Bob is the alternate on the books last time. I don't know if you remember that. Is that correct?
Is that a secretary's duty to remember?
No.
That's why I'm nominating. It's the second.
Do you have a nomination?
I'll nominate Bob Wooten as the alternate. It's the same item as the board meeting, so that's difficult. We have to run right there.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. That position passes unanimously as well. Okay. That's it.
That's it, unless there are other agencies that need appointments to be made to that you sit on?
I have a question, and I may need a little research if you don't mind. As the outgoing, when I was the President, I guess I'm no longer the President of ISOC, but I guess I even tell next week.
All right.
So we had some discussion at the ISOC Executive Committee about me being the appointed, whatever it is, to OCAU, Orange County Council of Government. Phil Anthony, who's our current appointed liaison from ISOC, was asking for someone else. So we're not clear whether I was appointed as the member or not. I'm still trying to get that cleared. We have to clear it for Mr. Anthony.
Okay.
Does that require, or since that's an ISOC appointment, they do that, not us, right?
Correct.
Okay.
I thought you were.
I'm on OCAU.
Leslie wasn't sure. I know you. I assumed that Phil had turned it over to me.
Yes.
But we're not sure. We're researching the minutes to see how it's done. Leslie is the.
Are you still a member of ISOC? Is it not the President?
It's immediately past President, I'm still a board member.
So you're representing ISOC and OCAU.
Right.
So that's probably.
Yeah, okay. I just, that had come up as a question in my feeble brain at some points. I thought I better check with you.
And I have to be to ISOC for CSDA.
Right.
Yeah, it's open to the public, because I've met a few.
They're pretty good. It'll be interesting if there's a couple.
I mean, I'm a gentleman.
Okay. Then we'll move to item two, the 27th meeting calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. Before you is the 2017 meeting calendar for the Coast Mises Sanitary District. Our meeting dates for the agenda review meeting still will remain on the first Monday of each month at 8:30. Our study sessions are held on the second Tuesday of each month at 9:30. And our regular board meetings are at 5:30 on the fourth Thursdays of the month. We will continue to schedule our liaison committee meetings every third Friday of the month, so quarterly we'll have those, and we'll be rotating our locations as we have in the past. I'd like to draw your attention to some changes that we've made for a couple of the months during the year next year. In September, the agenda review meeting has been moved from the first Monday to the second Monday, which is September 11th, due to the Labor Day holiday. Our office will be closed on the fourth. The board meeting for September has also been moved up a week to September 21st, because the week of the 28th is during the CSDA annual conference, which the board and staff and our general manager normally attends as a whole. In November, our regular meeting has been moved to the fifth Thursday due to Thanksgiving holiday. And in December, our regular meeting has been moved up to the 21st per the Christmas holiday week following that. So if there are any questions or changes that you wish to make, we can do so.
I did have a question. Our liaison committee, we talked about this so much, but we never said, are we including asking the Newport Basin Unified School District to be represented there or not?
That should be put on the agenda at the study session. I'm very favored.
I agree, Jim. We've talked about that, and I think you're an integral partner in all this. Do we want to do it at a study session, or at the next liaison committee meeting, should we discuss? Anything?
Or can we just invite them to attend?
Sure.
When is the next liaison meeting? You don't have a calendar.
At this time, we've requested of Mesa and the city to check their calendar for the 27th of January at 8:00 a.m., and I haven't received a response back yet. So hopefully, we'll hear back in the first week of the new year.
You won't hear next week, because the city hall's closed, obviously, so you won't hear until after the first Friday.
Yes.
Okay. We correspond with Mesa Water on this?
Yes, we did. I did send a notice to Mrs. Schoenberger's assistant.
They looked about even inviting them, to be honest with you.
They did have a few items to add to the agenda.
We would like them to see our facility.
Is there anything wrong with us inviting Newport Mesa without the okay of the other agencies or not? Scott?
It's open to the public.
It is a public meeting, so we can invite them, but I think as a common courtesy, we should just let them know, at least, the city and Mesa Water know. I do believe that the city does meet with school officials on a regular basis, so they have like, they're all little layouts and committee with between those two agencies. So the city might see, well, no need to meet with them twice. But it's a good courtesy just to let them know that we're thinking about that.
So are you saying, let's wait until after the next liaison meeting to invite them from Mesa?
Yeah, I would say my suggestion is, let's put it on the liaison committee agenda and have a discussion with everyone.
Okay. Let's go in there. Because we invited the city to Propecia one time also, they really never attended, but once.
Yes, and it wasn't elected officials, it was just a senior staff member. They didn't seem, on the elected side, they didn't seem much interest attending. But I remember the city of Coast Mesa makes a lot of our all support of inviting Newport Beach. We can ask them again if you want us.
They have a big mayor that might be interested.
You want me to ask the, reach out to Dave Ditt and see if they'd be willing to do that again?
I don't know, probably one of our partners, Social and Rentswater District, if you want to invite them. Let's wait on that one.
The agenda review on the, on the 11th, you know, the agenda will already be in our hands for the study session. I think the agenda review is set up, you know, for the study session and the board. I think it's a little close.
The agenda review is normally for the regular board meeting's agenda.
Well, then I withdraw my.
There is one other thing.
I come, when I was President, I commented on both of them.
Would you like me to? In January, we also.
I think I need to do some mentor.
Try it. In January, you've also moved the agenda review out one week as well.
Yes, to the ninth.
Okay. Any other discussion on the calendar?
That looks pretty good.
We have a motion then to accept the calendar?
So.
Second. Motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for the appropriate colors. It makes it so much easier to figure out, and I know, I appreciate it. Okay. Item three.
I thank you, Mr. President, Dan Bogdarsky. Our management house, too, will be giving this report.
Thank you, Mr. President and board members. At the December 13 study session, staff presented the board with the engineering technician classification to replace the permit technician classification. The position for the permit technician had remained vacant since August 2016. We've had five recruitments for this position since 2013. It's a difficult, it's proved to be a very difficult position to recruit for as it is classified now. The education and experience requirements for the permit technician position are not producing the kind of candidates that the district needs to fulfill the job. The staff is proposing the position of engineering technician. And in this position, our requirements will include the knowledge of basic civil engineering principles and practices, engineering plans, legal versions, right playing procedures, drawings, and blueprints, and engineering action principles and concepts. The new classification will allow greater flexibility in the nature of the technical work that's achievable through the permit office. The proposed education and experience required for the engineering technician classification would be an associate degree in engineering or related field, and one year of customer service experience, including a high level of public contact. Staff believes that this will draw candidates more suited to the position. Another benefit is that the engineering technician would also act as the district's alternate inspector. Right now, we are contracting with Anderson Pena for those services at the rate of $50 per hour, so we would save on that. And then additionally, the engineering technician would be available to provide backup final inspection services in the absence of our regular contracted inspector. It will also, this position will also allow us to act as a train under the district engineer and gain experience towards earning their professional engineering license, which would be an attractive draw for a candidate also. And the technician would be responsible for networking with our partner agencies such as the city of Coast Mesa, Newport Beach, and the county of Orange. So we did a salary survey, a comparison, I'm sorry, a comparison of the agencies in Orange County with engineering technician position. And the average minimum salary for this position is $56,650. And then an average maximum annual salary for this classification is $75,960. Staff is suggesting the board approve the placement of the engineering technician on the district's 2016, 2017 salary range schedule on range number 36. You should have that as an attachment to the report. And that range is minimum $56,093.55 to $75,726.30. Upon approval of the engineering technician classification, staff will proceed with the recruitment, and we will push colleges, local colleges, and recruit, push recruitment towards using college graduates and those who are at the entry level for this field.
Other discussion? Except a quick question. Does Orange Coast College, Golden West College, Miss Coast Mises, do they have programs that will fit our criteria, do you know?
I don't know exactly. I don't know.
I can guess Golden West, based on their curriculum and their history. I think they're a little more technical in their curriculum than Golden West.
Than the Orange Coast College.
Orange Coast tends to be more in the party curriculum. As a graduate.
Well, I should be surprised.
Golden West, so I'd be curious to keep track of this, see.
Where the applicants come from?
Yeah, man.
Yes, yes.
I don't know anything about Irvine Valley College, but I think Golden West would be one that would be one of the.
Yes. And that's, one thing we like to do, too, is to find out where the applicants are finding out about us, where they saw the job posted, or where they're getting information from. That's always beneficial for future improvements.
Orange Coast used to have a class, and we could achieve an associate degree, and they don't have it now, I don't think. It's been brought up to them a couple of times, I know. But San, Rancho Santiago out in Orange, they do have one.
They have a wastewater associated, Rancho Santiago, yeah.
So it might go to us to make contact with them out there.
Rancho Santiago.
Or San, is it San An or Rancho Santiago?
Rancho Santiago. Rancho Santiago. San, going for those.
Do we know anybody that went to school there?
My daughter goes there right now.
I know a question on inspector. How often would the inspector, this person go out to inspect?
Intermittently, over short periods of time. The amount of time it takes to construct a sewer on a subdivision is probably a day and a half.
So if this person was hired and put out, would you be training them how to inspect? Because they probably wouldn't have any background in it.
Yes, we can provide.
Staff anticipates that we would be able to have Rob's inspector trained on what they look like, you know, doing the inspections. And then with Rob's conflict, where he can inspect it, then we would have our alternate. And if it was too difficult for our alternate, we would go to Anderson Pena. So if Rob's doing a very large project, then it would be too difficult. In November, we had two different projects, the alternate inspector inspected for Rob, and the minimum billing is two hours, and they were there three hours, so we paid six hours.
I think the emphasis is more on civil engineering associates. And they may or may not, you know, end up in any wastewater courses by the time they're settled, or through their associate engineering agreement. He could.
Okay. There's no other discussion, but a motion in a second to approve the action. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Opposed? You know what? Oh, never mind, never mind. We're on D4 now. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. President. Wendy Davis will be giving this report.
Hi, thank you. Before you, first time in many years, I don't know how many, but we're presenting you the financial statements in December as opposed to January. And they're attached. We've submitted these financial statements for the GFNA award. We received a clean opinion from the auditors, which is good news. You received no management letter comments. So attached also is the internal control and the, internal control and the, I forget what it's called, the compliance letter from the auditors on the post-communication. And as you probably read, they didn't find any significant efficiencies, so we are doing well. You can see that the district's financial position changed in the second, the second bullet point, that our unrestricted net position decreased in the prior year by approximately $2.5 million. This is due to the purchase of the building. So our actual assets increased offset that. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for me?
Just a comment. Good job. You did a very good job on here.
Thank you. They had a lot of help. Staff is really good. It's been a busy year with the move and everything, but.
Good coordination.
Thank you.
Nice picture on the cover page, by the way.
Isn't that neat?
That's great.
You have to thank Caitlin. She took out the tree. That's kind of funny.
Any other questions for staff? Let's proceed to the office report.
Yes.[1784.12]
Before we move on though, we have a public comments to open. Mr. Mosher, you can request a question.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer and members of the board. My name is Mr. Mosher, I actually have several comments on this. I didn't realize it was in the agenda until a couple of hours ago, I've been looking through it. I noticed in the letter transmitted, it was reminding us of the district's commitment to produce not only this standard statewide comprehensive annual financial report, but also a popular annual financial report, which the district did last year. And I was looking for confirmation that the district is intending to do that again this year. I am not a financial person, don't understand all of the tables that I've seen here, so I think that is helpful if the district can do that. Second comment I have, what we all recall, the recent measure TT, in which Mesa Water contracted for this survey by the company called Arcadas. And my vague understanding what the argument was about that, that that company, Arcadas, looking at this district's comprehensive annual financial report, came to the conclusion, misleadingly Mesa Water said it was, would be due to consolidation. But I believe the Arcadas company just thought in reading this, that they thought this district had a pot of unnecessary money that it was saving, that it could be returned to the rate payers, whether or not there was consolidation. And I believe this district's response was that that money that looked like it was just loose cash, was actually committed or restricted or intended for some purpose, but it was not clear in the comprehensive annual report that it was in that restricted mode. So I'm just wondering, this year's report, if that is making any more clear. I didn't have time to look at it, it didn't jump out at me that there were funds that were restricted or committed. And so perhaps that still needs work in future years. And then again, arcing back to the website, I was trying to compare this to maybe the previous years, and I noticed that our new consolidated website, if you go to the transparency page, which is commonly where you expect the financial report, the budget information to be, it's not there anymore. And as Wendy said, you have to know that you have to look, you have to find out whether this thing's right or wrong, and find this department, find it. And this is really an important component of transparency, and probably the link to it should be on the page and perhaps some budget information. The main thing that's on that page currently is just this salary, which is very good. And what people expect, can expect this too. And then the final comment I made, since I don't understand all the financial cables, when I see this, I tend to look more at the supplementary information that's in the back. And this one, I don't know how accessible it is to you, but on page 64, as a rate payer in the wastewater fund, I was interested in this list of the principal wastewater customers. And I was telling us the big industrial customers, commercial and multifamily ones. The reason I was earlier looking for the rate structure is I know we charge the industrial ones a higher rate because they're, one assumes they're in a manufacturing type business or something like that, discharge than a retail company would have. But looking at this table, it's quite okay to me. The biggest industry is something called international asset management group. What we see there is just a list of the property owners. And to the person reading this, they have, the person who's paying the property tax bill doesn't really explain to you what the industry is. Sounds like a financial company being charged, just an industrial one, which is very misleading. But it might help if it identified the tenant or what the company was, rather than just who is paying the bill. And then the public would understand, oh, these are industrial, these are commercial and these are multifamily. So those are my thoughts and suggestions and comments. Thank you for your motion. Your thoughts?
I love that someone looks at my financial statements. Thank you.
Golden West can hear what can. This is.
If I may, the PAFR, we are producing a PAFR again this year. The report is due to GFPA for an award, and so I'm currently working on it. We wouldn't normally take it to the board, but it should be available in the middle of January on our website. So that's, we typically keep all the financial statements on the finance department website. I'm not sure if there has been, I don't typically go to anyone else's department other than mine. So I'm not sure if there are links, but I'm sure that Gina Maloney could make a link to the financial statements and the rates. That would probably be easy enough to do. As far as the funds, the restricted, unrestricted, under the GFPA and the GAAP accounting and all of the criteria that we need to submit our financial statements to receive the award that is, you know, is the woo-hoo, we're not allowed to actually identify the restricted, unrestricted assets unless there's a legal obligation for it. And so where, years ago, we used to be able to do that if you adopted an ordinance or something restricting certain funds, then we were able to break it down and show that. But we're no longer able to do that. So unless there's a legal restriction, like if you get measure M money, then that's legally restricted, then you're allowed to do that. But, so for us, we don't have those type, even though you do restrict money. We have money set aside for, you know, earthquake preparedness, we have money set aside to fund CIP projects, we have, you know, capacity charges which are restricted. So we do have restrictions on them, but for financial statement purposes, we're not allowed to disclose them in that kind of way. So they will not provide more information than was in the past, addressing his question regarding Mesa. You know, certainly, you know, you could give away all the money, but, you know, there's cash flow issues like any business, and we've talked about that, that, you know, because we only receive our revenues during certain portions of the year, we need to keep a reserve about just to be able to pay our bills when we don't get paid from the county. So that's an issue for us too, we set aside reserves for that. And the board has always been, you know, very frugal. If you've read the cover page, we anticipated a much larger deficit of solid waste fund this year. But again, the revenues came in higher and expenses came in lower because the organics wasn't taking off like we thought it would. So we're still, you know, we're, we decreased our reserve, but not as much as we anticipated over the last three years. I think we thought we would be down someplace in the range of 1.2, 1.5 million dollars of trash fund alone for, you know, adopting these new programs. And we just, this is the first year that we've had a deficit in many, 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 many years. So that hopefully answers that. The information on the tenants, we don't always have access to what the actual tenants do. What we do is in our system, we have who is paying the solid waste bill, or not solid waste, liquid waste bill. And so I guess we could go out and ascertain what business venture they're actually in. But it's, sometimes it's a little hard to believe information. But we could probably try and the board wish that and substitute those names in instead of the actual person paying. Sometimes we see like with the multifamily, the apartments customers, we'll see that, you know, the apartments obviously stay, but someone else will buy them. And so we typically don't just say the apartments, we say, you know, who's the owner, the current owner is. And that's just kind of been standard for providing information of this nature. And it says standard apartment for the GFPA award is to provide your largest rate payers. So, I think I've got everything?
My guess with the international asset management group, that's a lot of square feet, that's not one building.
You know, I.
I guess there probably, I don't know, but I would guess, I don't.
If you.
Yeah, there's no, I don't know where that's at. I don't know what Claydale is, I mean, that's probably the biggest industrial organization in the whole city.
Yeah.
So that is, that's got to be a conglomerate.
I, you know, I think we only changed the name of the rate payer to the actual rate payer. I think we used to keep what it did for a couple of them because they were unusual. And so I'll go back through our website and see if I can find out the name of the vendor. Because I think there were a couple that we did actually provide, you know, what they did more or less, not their names. So, because it's a little deceptive with the community college, you know, because there's the community college district and then the actual colleges. So you can have the community college, which is a small, I mean, the district is a small rate payer, where the community colleges are actually very large and independent of the district. So sometimes it's good to break it out.
We show on our website that the, our diversion rate is 60%. And then you show it years, page 93 is 57%. Scott probably learned this at Duff. But, you know, I have a problem with the diversion rate. And I'll be asking, you know, for some study sessions, I'm with CRNR because with the organics program, we should become better. I'll talk about that at the end. Anyway, on 82 and 83, if you can find the range.
Wendy, we, the trash efficiency, we plan to be efficient for the next three or four years, right?
We actually should have been, yeah, we should have been using reserves up the last two years, I think, three years almost. So yes, we did anticipate that, where it just, it just hasn't come to fruition yet. But I anticipate with the organics, the full first year, it'll be this year, and we should be 250,000, we were negative, so I'm anticipating we should be more. I don't know if we'll make it to 700,000, which is what we anticipated this year, but.
I think we have like four million that we're trying to reduce, right? To stabilize the treasuries.
In January, you'll get the quarterly budget report, which will have the first six months of this year. And we budgeted 600,000 for the organics program, and you'll be able to see what we've actually expended for the first six months of the year. That should kind of give us a telltale sign of where we'll end up at the end of the year.
I thought maybe it was just the budget conservatism that you would put in 600, 700,000 going to 200,000.
You know, I am conservative, I will own that, I, you know, finance people love that. But, no, we actually, Scott and I met and came up with a formula of how much we anticipated shifting from, away from the regular trash to the organics. And we, I think Scott was actually trying to, I was being more conservative than Scott wanted. I think we were talking about doing like a 20% shift or something the first year that was anticipated, and I think I talked him down to like, oh, there's only that's 15. So that, it was not very much.
Well, that's the data that also is part of that question that I have, is why we're not moving towards those targets either in diversion rate or why the organics diversion that downs a part. Maybe the two answered the question, we should have to have CRNR and/or staff give me some suggestions.
Well, I think that maybe a study session item after we see the quarterly budget to kind of have a raw picture of where we are going with the organics.
When is the quarterly budget shift?
Yeah, it will be on the board meeting, but we can have those numbers for a study session if you want. We should know by then.
How does a period of contract run, the third or fourth?
No, the halfway through the year, we usually have a little.
Contract by the second quarter.
Yes.
Okay, anything else? Move to item D5.
If you don't mind, just for that, a couple of comments before we move on to the next item. Just for the public's knowledge of what a PAFR is, you know, the comprehensive annual financial report is a very large document, you know, 67, 80 pages, very difficult to read for the average person to understand it. So the PAFR, the Popular Annual Financial Report condenses that into a 15-page document, so it's easier to understand what our, what our finances are. I don't believe, there are very many special districts in California that produce PAFRs. I don't believe anyone in Orange County is doing it. And there's very, and there's even few cities that do it. So I think this is just another effort for us to demonstrate to the public of our transparency and our finances. I also want to commend Wendy for putting that document together. She spent a lot of long hours putting it together, I know she worked with her staff, Caitlin and Lou, put it together, and I want to commend them for that. And also commend them for the results, which was a clean, clean opinion. Just how does, our internal controls are in place, we are spending our money appropriately and all's good. So again, I want to commend Wendy and her staff on that, so.
Well, I think we're all proud of the effort, and I think we take a lot of pride in the fact that we are one of the only agencies that produce that report. And it just goes to show how efficient and how dedicated our staff is, including our general managers.
Yeah, I would like to thank our general manager and the board. It's very easy because you guys are all very conservative and physically, you know, competent managing the district's money, so that makes it very easy to produce these type of documents and information.
Everyone's so nice this time of year. Except for.
Scott, has this gone to CSBA at all, as far as, you know, for competition or staying for an award?
No, we usually send it, as Wendy said, we send it to GFPA, the Government Finance Association Organization, it's the national organization.
Yeah, I understand that, but I just wonder about CSBA being that this is something that's normally not done. You had said that this is very usual, unique, you know, for us to be able to get some food for.
Sure, we can definitely.
I think it'd be worth it.
Sure.
Because it's perfect timing before our conference comes.
Can you show me?
He gave it to Ryan.
I want attention.
Absolutely.
My girlfriend.
CSBA. You know, if we submit it to the, somewhere that it goes to get into one of their awards.
Sure, it's good, very easily. That's what I think, I mean, even us to do that.
I believe Orange County San Antonio District does a cap, and I believe they get an award for it also.
Has it around?
The United States government does one, and they do it at 16 pages, so I had to cut mine down to be less than theirs.
You've got some work to do, you've got 94. She's almost, she's almost. Okay, will you keep this up? Let's move on to item D5.
Thank you, Mr. President. So four months ago, the city, or, sorry, the district entered an agreement with Fable Public Affairs and Kirk Pringle Associates to work with our ad hoc committee and support the organization's current outreach program and government relations. And I believe we can, we can attest that their services has bare fruit, and some of the accomplishments that were made during this past four months included drafting the content with several rounds edits of the new newsletter. You know, we had a special newsletter that went out to the public, that took a lot of, a lot of editing, a lot of discussion, and Roger Fable and Peter Wellingham was instrumental for that newsletter. They also assisted us presenting the PowerPoint presentation for the president's day of the district presentation. They generated, edited several press releases, they helped us edit the argument against measure TT, they attended weekly meetings, ad hoc committees, strategizing, making recommendations. So we thought it was very worthwhile, and we believe it's worthwhile to continue their services for another six months. And that's before you today, is to approve extending their contract for six months. The price, the cost is, is higher, a little bit higher, it's $10,000 a month. But please keep in mind, you are getting two consulting services for that price, and you're getting two consultants that are, that are well-known, highly respected, and very well-qualified. And so I think it's money well-spent, and especially in the upcoming year, we think it'll be very prudent to have their services. Most importantly, it'd be very important for them to help us get our information out when there's misinformation going out in the public. That's when we really need their services. So we will, staff is recommending that the board extend their contract.
One more, second discussion. Go ahead. You know, can we just receive word that Mesa Water's not going to press the issue for a year? I mean, whether you believe or not is another story, but, you know, if that is the case, then, I mean, I don't know if we need that kind of firepower. I mean, I think they've done a great job up till now, but if we're going to be swinging windmills.
I think the best, I think the best way to find that out is within the liaison committee, and we'll see how they react. Because on that agenda, we'll talk about shared services, and we'll see how they'll react to that. But I think it's still good to have Roger and Peter on our side in case something happens behind the scenes we don't know about.
Well, I think it's interesting, they said. Well, I think it's interesting that they said that they're, they're not going to work, they're not going to do anything with LAFCO for at least a year. That doesn't preclude them from all the other nonsense that they're doing.
Oh, no, not at all.
I mean, they, they've ignored the LAFCO process from day one anyway, so by telling us they're not going to do anything with LAFCO for a year, they're still disseminating public opinion, trying to keep public opinion up there. I mean, Luke, what's his name, what the money's article yesterday was, was pretty slandered in words of Mesa Water. So I've, I've been very impressed with the advice and the work that we're getting from you, from these gentlemen. I'd like to see us continuing.
I wouldn't trust necessarily any of the Mesa executive or directors' comments. If they're made for a purpose, then we've never yet figured out what his agendas are. I believe they're worse. You know, those comments, they can make those comments to just about anyone, even though they're pretty important in this process. And my trust level basis, off, off the charts below zero.
Yes, I feel extremely important that we keep up with this, and that we stay on track with what we're doing, because, you know, I feel very strong that we can't take anything for granted, and that if it is going to LAFCO, or if it doesn't go to LAFCO, the point is, we need to have consultants behind this, we need our key order that keeps going on, and the people out there in the public do not understand what is going on, because it's slandered. And you have to walk, and I know all of us have to walk around and talk to people and say, it's not that way, you know? So I feel it's very extremely important to continue it. I'd even like to make a motion to...
Sorry, did I have a motion? Did you have a motion in second?
Me?
Bob did, I'm second, did ours second.
There was I.
Only you did yesterday. Yeah, I think that next six months for the public outreach is going to be really important. From what I've seen the last six months, I think it's really important that we have public outreach ready to go, and public notes happening in our newsletters and other things that we do. So I think that's why I have second, did second, I'm considering. Okay, real discussion.
I, I do think we need to continue to monitor it, and I'm sure our contract allows for an out, given the proper notice. And, you know, don't get me wrong, you guys are doing a great job, and I, but I don't want to, I don't want to get in there and have to overkill something, you know?
Okay, public comment, open this for public comments. What's your opinion?
Thank you, President. Appreciate it. Tagging on Vice President Perryman's comment, the direction that seemed this in the agenda was the contract seemed a little unusual to me. I'm not sure where this out goes in it, but in Newport Beach, when we hire consultants, it's usually on an hourly basis, and it seemed unusual. It's a fixed monthly rate, it was $7,500 a month, and now it's a commitment to pay $10,000 a month, apparently whether you need the services or not. And I couldn't understand the reason for that, because apparently they were successful. Measure ET passed by a surprisingly small margin, considering voters were offered free money if they voted yes. And what will happen in the next few months seems to have a little unpredictable. So I would think the contract should be written with some understood hourly rate, and you might find in some months you don't need very much service, with a cap on it, perhaps of $7,500 or $10,000, rather than a commitment to pay that every month whether you need the service or not. And the, the terms here, public outreach and government outreach are being a little confused with a good image to the public, which we partly do through the newsletter, but I don't want to sound like a broken record, it's also our website, how that appears to the public compared to Mesa Water. And some money might be better invested in that to create a better impression.
Thank you. Okay, then I will close the public comment. Call for a question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Pose, motion carries unanimously.
Just for clarification, Mr. President, that the board is also approving appropriation of $35,000 from fund balance in the solid waste fund, and $35,000 from contingencies in the wastewater fund. Correct?
Say it, can you say that again?
Okay, so you might, if you want to take a second action on this, please, but we need, we need board action to approve the appropriation of $35,000 for fund balance in the solid waste fund, and $35,000 from the contingency wastewater fund. So basically, you have the $7,000, you're splitting it 50/50.
Would that need to be a second motion?
I, yes, please, someone can have it on the record.
I'll make that motion. I'll second. Okay, discussion. Call for a question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Pose, asked unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, happy holidays. Thank you very much.
All right, Steve Greasy, D6, Scott?
Thank you, Mr. President. So back on May 10th of this year, staff presented to you some, some options for implementing a grease control device installation assistance program, where the district could give loan out, or not loan, but awards funds to restaurants that are having, that don't have great grease, grease traps or grease interceptors. The problem was that some of these grease traps interceptors can be quite expensive, and so similar to like a SLAP program, we're considering maybe doing some similar on the grease, grease trap program. So on, on May 10th, the board directed staff to target a couple of areas. One was 19th Street, and the other one was 17th Street. And so as we look into that a little bit closely, we noticed that the, the restaurants on 19th Streets, for example, the ones that don't have grease interceptor or grease trap, they would have to install a very expensive device, anywhere between $30,000 to $50,000. And I know the board were thinking about reimbursing $2,500, so it was way out of the board's range. And then we also noticed that, well, there's really only one hotspot on 19th Street, and even though we're cleaning it four times a year, it's only costing us, it's costing us less than $1,000. So it didn't meet, didn't sound to be very cost-effective or a prudent way of using our tax credit dollars. It was only costing us less than $1,000 to maintain the hotspots on 19th Street. So then we looked at 17th Street, and again, it was a very similar situation. The, the restaurants that didn't have traps or interceptors would require like a $30,000, $50,000 device. And again, it was one hotspot, costing us less than $1,000. So what staff has recommended tonight is really do not implement the program. We're just saying, thank you for letting us look into that, but after further analysis, we believe we should stick to the status quo and clean those two hotspots four times a year.
Yes, please, sorry. You know, Newport River was a problem. They, they solved their problem with the grease. I know that they have, they have a company pick up your grease, you know, weekly or something.
Newport River on, on Harbor?
Yeah, on Harbor, on, on, it used to be a problem for us.
Honestly, I don't know, because that wasn't one of the restaurants we were focusing on. We were just focusing on 19th and 17th Streets. I don't, I defer to our district in here.
I suppose what they did solve the problem, basically. Sorry, I know that they have a company, they have a barrel of grease that gets dumped. You know, I thought that we could probably try to get that grease for us, I mean, for CRNR and for diversion rate.
Well, that would, that'd be something CRNR would have to negotiate with, with them, so.
They, they solved their problem.
Sounds like it.
Hey, I applaud the staff for coming up with a good decision on, on this. There's no point going out and creating some program when it really doesn't justify its all.
Correct.
And thank you for that.
Well, well said, Jim. I, I had the same thought. When I read the report, I thought, yeah, this is something to help me clear up. So, good job. Director, I'm sure you'd like us.
In staff report, it says, things like, on 19th Street, there are four FSEs that are significant offenders of Costa Mesa Centenary's Fog Control Program. In light of staff putting that in this, in this thing, is there, you know, what recourse do we have to, to, they're currently not in violation, but they're significant offenders. You may be able to come to one of the meetings, but, you know, that just seems, it seemed like it would be necessary to address that comment with something, and I'm not suggesting, you know, to be entered into this program.
I, I think they're referring to the magnitude of the offense, offenses on, on those streets.
Yeah.
I, I don't think, you know, they may have to go out there four times a year, but it only costs us $1,000 or whatever, whatever it is.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm a big proponent of the staff's, way the staff approaches it right now. The wording in the agenda report is, I'd like some more explanation about what significant offenders of Costa Mesa Centenary District's Fog Control Program is. Does it mean they didn't put a lot of grease in? I mean, the terminology significant is, is what caught my attention.
I don't have a clean record.
I know detailed resume for our grandfather did the program. Anyway, I guess that might be a different study session I was attending. I used to attend those meetings, maybe I'll come back.
What's the name of the company that does inspections?
The, I'm sorry, what's the name of that?
The company that does the inspection?
The EEC, EEC Department.
So EEC?
Yes.
Yeah, we have, have a study session for a while, maybe it's, there'll be some questions asked, and there's some streets right there, it's, it's, I gave a wide list. That's what Bob has.
Paul, was this staff determination to word it this way, or was it EEC's determination that they're significant?
It was EEC's, EEC's determination.
Yeah, okay, so let's, maybe have them in the study. It just doesn't seem like we can take no action.
They may have things to mention. I have no such question, if they have noticed that, well, we still have a problem. See, we charge them for cleaning it up.
Well, we charged them to inspect it.
They inspected it. Hell, I know, but I meant the restaurant itself, only overly, they reimburse us if we have to go out.
They do though, they, Scott, I don't think so. They reimburse us ultimately, we...
The, the restaurants?
No.
No, only if, if they have an SSO, they'll re, and we respond, they'll reimburse us, but...
I thought we had the, the guy over on 17th Street, remember?
Yeah, he had to get an SSO, and so we had to, so, so the inspections, that cost is tied into our rates. So that's how we get, our, our, recoup that expenses through our rates.
Yeah. Okay. Any action you're asking, you want a motion to not approve?
No, it's just FYI, it's just, it's just a follow-up report, yes.
Are we doing this against our clients?
Can I just add, Mr. President, that it's not only the SSO, but if it's an imminent threat of an SSO, we can also get reimbursed and have to go out and correct things, but we don't have to wait for the SSO. But we do have, they, their property does have to be in a certain condition before we can assess the cost.
I, I'm still, I agree with Jim, what Jim said, and I, I'd much rather see us spending it, if we spend money, put more money in the SLAP program before we do it. That, that's just my thought. I know that's your favorite program, so.
Wendy has that part of her.
Mr. President, I just got word from our, our district clerk that prefers that the board take action, not approving this program. So if you don't mind, send your motion.
Send my motion not to approve the program. I'll second. Okay. There were three items for action, you wanted separately, or is...
All together, it's fine.
All together, all three of those actions? Okay, comfortable with that?
Yes.
Discussion. Discussion. Call for a question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Thank you.
And the action of no action approves, is approved unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Wendy, you must have got it. I have a second, Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is more of a cleanup for our section of our operations code. Right now, the way our, our code is, is reads is that any developer is going to be doing improvements on his or her property has to submit a video of televising their lateral, and that, and that video is good for one year. What we have been seeing recently is sometimes these developers or proprietors will do multiple improvements within one year, which means they'd have to submit several videos to us, and we think that's inappropriate, and it doesn't really require to do that. So, so this ordinance that was written by a district council, and approved by district council, will just allow developer proprietors to submit one, one video.
Okay. Questions for staff? For approval? Second. Discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Action asked unanimously. Thank you. Can I make?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, you've heard me say that, I'll say it again. I want, I want to thank the board for your courage and your vision for approving this building as our new headquarters, and allowing us to make the necessary improvements so that it is functional and operational for us and for the public. And so before you is the notice of acceptance of the improvements to this facility. We, the board awarded a contract to Kenny Constructions for $350,000, $350,000, $308 to perform the, the facility improvements. Under our code, the general manager has authority to approve up to 10% of the contract value. And in this case, that, that 10% was $75,000. And attached to you, you'll see that we had significant change orders, and that was, we were kind of expecting that, you know, once you start doing facility improvements, there's the unknown, once you start knocking down the walls. So we had 33 change orders totaling less than $75,000. However, at the very end, we did have two change orders that are over my authority approval. Those, those change orders is total is $8,237, and that was required by the city. The city had us do some electrical improvements and also some HVAC air bounce that had to be done. So that put us over the 10%, which I need your approval on that. All in all, though, the total amount spent is still under budgeted, so we're still under the budget amount. We, the budget amount for the improvements was $845,000. The total expenses, $833,8484. So tonight, I need staff that's recommending several actions. One is to approve change orders 34 and 35 totaling $8,237. Accept the improvements as completed and file a notice completion. Authorize payment of 5% retention 35 days after notice completion is recorded, and then exonerate labor materials bond 3 to 5 days after notice completion is recorded, and exonerate creative performance bond 1 year after notice completion is recorded.
Move for approval. Do we, can we do this in one motion, or do we need to have all those motions?
One for all four.
Okay.
For all four. Okay, discussion. Just to echo, we're about, I, I'm stoked about this building. I, I mean, even, even with the dais, I mean, it, it really is nice to come over here. And not that it wasn't nice to go over the old building, but, you know, parking, and it's easy, and you guys seem to have adapted and moved into your new home pretty well, I think, except for the space heaters all over the place, but won't be those in the summer, so. Yeah, I think, I think all five of us agree with Scott on this thing. I'm sure he's a good one. Yeah, really. All right, we have a motion in the second to, to take the action requested. Call for a question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimously. Okay. All right, let's move on to the Estancia High School baseball team.
Yes.
I'm going to step out, because I'm still associated with Estancia, if that's okay. Okay, very reflective. Director Harry is giving himself, any discussion action on this?
Thank you, Mr. President. So we received a contribution program eligibility application from Estancia High School Baseball Team, and what they are recommending is that we sponsor their organization by placing a three-by-five banner on the stadium, baseball stadium outfield that promotes recycling, such as we can say organics, we can also do the alkaline battery recycling, or the cooking grease. It's really up to us what we want our message to say, but to, in order, before you approve something like this, you have to, there's two things you need to establish, the purpose why we're trying, what CM is trying to serve by being a sponsor. Purpose must be established as one of CMD's statutory powers, or a power that would be incidental to those per... that would be incidental to those purposes. For example, as I mentioned earlier, properly, the recycling programs are properly treat wastewater, preventing SSOs, and then describe what's mentioned will advance our purpose. We have, the district has approved similar programs for other organizations, like we've had the banners at the Estancia football program, and also at Costa Mesa High School football program, so this is not unprecedented before, we have not approved something like this in the past, so staff's recommending that the board approves the application, and we will work with the baseball team as far as what message it'll be on the banner, but I believe that we're recommending $500 to the Estancia High School baseball team.
Now, nothing was on the application for the amount, so I wasn't sure if it was five, but it is five.
Well, yeah, exactly, thank you, Mr. President, I recommend $500, because that's what we've done in the past for other, other programs.
Okay, I think one of the, it was kind of interesting to coach, but support a go rehab team in our outfield, where a lot of attention will be this season, they must have a weak pitching staff if they think their outfield is going to be good, but I thought that was pretty innovative, and knowing me like I do, I, I think that's kind of cool.
I'd like to move for approval with the finding that this is something that actually shows our public relations, and it shows community support.
Second.
As well as what our managers indicate.
Just a real quick comment, it says check this one requirement, he didn't check the box about making recycling cans. I need to just emphasize to them that we can have CRR give them some of the recycling boxes.
Sure.
Yeah, because they do have stuff out there. Whatever we can do with that. Okay.
Yeah, it's just a, so we're going in with three-by-five banner, we paid them $500 and they purchased the banner?
Yeah, they'll purchase, we'll tell them what to put on the banner, we'll tell them the message, and then they'll produce it for us.
Okay, I call for a question, all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? That motion carries four to zero with one, what do you see, he didn't have a statement he refused to say.
Yes, he recorded that way.
Okay. All right, then we'll move to the Costa Mesa Community Run.
Thank you, Mr. President, again, this is another request, an application, a contribution application request for the Costa Mesa Community Run. We have participated in this program for several years, for the amount, we should get a booth to display our recycling programs, we also have staff there answering questions, and then what we do is bring, we bring our tent and tables, and for $500, that's what it takes, and I think it's just for one day, so we've done this in the past, and recommending approval tonight as well.
I received an email today from Karen Bartlow, who's the coordinator, she had planned on being here tonight, but her son was to arrive wherever he was coming from early today, from college or whatever, and he got delayed, so he arrived later, coming in later, so she wanted me to tell all of you how much she appreciated her support. Sorry she couldn't be with us. Now, we have a motion this second, then, she was asking for $1,000 if they could ever, but you don't get any, there's no difference between the $1,000 level and the $500.
Exactly.
And I think consistency wise, when you're giving $500, that's what we normally do for these efforts. Okay, so the motion was for $500, correct? Okay, discussion? I'll call for a question, all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Unanimous. Item 11.
Thank you, Mr. President, later tonight, the district engineer will be recommending the board approve a contract for the Victoria Pump Station force main replacement project. However, unfortunately, we don't have enough funds for that right now, so that's why, right now, I'll be, I am recommending that the board approve transferring $133,000 from the President Pump Station Rehab Project, number 317, to this project. And if you approve the transfer, what I will do also is approve awarding Rob Hemerson Associates the contract administration inspection services. His firm submitted a proposal, it is 6.5% of the contract cost, industry standard is usually about 10%, so if you want me to go out to bid, I can do that, but to find something less, lower than 6.5% is highly unlikely, which is why, I'm just letting you know, if you approve the transfer, then I'm going ahead and approve the contract administration inspection service to Rob Hemerson Associates.
Discussion, Charlie, there's not a problem with that, is there?
Just within your limits, Scott.
Yes, yes.
He's, I think he's just telling you that we're within his limits, we're not adding anything to the agenda, and there's not a problem, because Rob is not making the recommendation to you.
Okay.
Your manager's making the recommendation.
Yes, I was just saying, soul provider stuff, you know, but I'll move the action this second. I'll get it.
Yeah, Rob, this was originally, or Scott, this was originally part of the four force main renovation project, now it's a separate project. So, why was it separated? Is it because we have to do this action?
Why were the four force mains separated?
We originally had four force mains that were high priority, and this was one of them. So it was in that, it was in that. Can I do?
I was just going to say, yes, it was originally budgeted as four, and then I think when we got to the second force main, and they were doing the estimates of it, we realized we were not going to have enough money, so the engineer said, let's put off and budget the Victoria Station, because we can't get to it anyway, so we'll put it off until the year we can actually get to it. So we utilized the budget over three projects instead of four, like we anticipated, and we rebudgeted the Victoria for $320,000 in this year.
My question is, why didn't we just increase the budget of that original project that was in? You know, not, not material, such as another page I have.
Well, staff has difficulty with multiple projects in one, because we capitalize assets that are spaced out throughout the city. But basically, it was staff by net staff, we couldn't get to the project, so having that large amount of money sitting there till whenever you could actually get to it didn't seem prudent, so I think we reduced it almost two years ago.
That's all correct.
When do we plan to get to the President Pump Station? A year?
The force main is in design right now, so probably in six months or so, we'll be ready to construct the force main.
Will we call four, be completed within the time period?
The South Coast Plaza is under contract, but cannot start until January, and this one will be done concurrently with it. So I think by the end of January, all four shall be done, and it's also very hard to design a number of different force mains and put it under one project, very complicated.
Guys, we all want to get it done as soon as possible, reasonably possible.
In February, we'll do a study session on where we are with CIP, and how we're going to go forward in the next two-year budget cycle, and so then if you have a lot of questions, I'm sure the engineer will be able to, you know, answer how he's prioritizing, and what he anticipates getting to the projects.
Well, this contract later may be ended, it might have been a working contract.
Correct.
Okay. Now, let's look. Okay. Okay.
We need your approval to transfer him.
Yeah, we need a motion. I need a second. Okay, any other discussion? Call for a question, all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Okay, Rob, your reports?
Thank you, Mr. President, and board members. I'd be happy to answer questions on the project status report if they're ready.
Questions for Rob?
Thank you. Item two, acceptance of improvements for number 200B Harbor Pump Station Force Main Replacement, that's standard action items at the completion of the project.
Move for approval.
Discussion? Great project. Yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to carry it unanimous.
Thank you. Item three is the award of the project that was just discussed, Victoria Street Force Main. You can see the bids, very close for low bid, GCI Construction was the low bidder, and they, they were the ones who instructed the Harbor Pump Station improvements, they're also, for all intents and purposes, finished with Eldon Pump Station, they were low bidder on that project, and they were low bidder on South Coast Plaza, and they're low bidder on Victoria Pump Station Force Main, which we like that, because they're a first-class construction company, and they work very well, and we have a good working relationship with them. So recommendation is to award the project to GCI Construction, and in the amount $377,620, and also approve a 10% contingency.
Move for approval, Stephen?
Second. We have a motion this second to approve the action, any special, what city they located in, Rob?
They're, they were, they were located in Costa Mesa, until they lost their yard on the north side of West Sixteenth Street, so now they're, they're out of San Clemente, so, but they still do a lot of work here, as you said.
Didn't they lose their yard for residential development?
Yes, they did, precisely.
I agree with that. Okay, we have a motion this second to approve the awarding of the contract, discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. President, and board members.
Okay. I have a little, this guy was here, he's very fast. Jim? The CSD report? Oh, for you, sir. The treasurer. Can I just give one for the treasurer? I'm so sorry, yesterday, this must have been a senior moment, I.
No, I'm just kidding, no items for court this evening.
Somehow I knew you were going to say it, so, sorry, Mark. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. President, and board, actually, I have three things to report to you briefly. One is, you received a memo from me about the new amendment to the law about executive compensation, and they made a little Bell, post-Bell reform, that now after your closed session and your authority to negotiate, you have to have a little oral report on what the substance of the compensation increase will be, just before you approve the executive's contract on the public agenda. So that's the only little change they made, and shouldn't be anything too difficult to comply with, but I think we're doing it already.
That's what I was going to say, we do.
Yes, yeah.
When I read it, it sounds familiar, yeah.
Yeah, but you could see, though, that some, maybe at Bell, didn't do that, or they might have been buried on the scent calendar.
Maybe some other agencies in this area have done that. I don't know.
Could be possible. Another is that the Supreme Court oral argument on the San Jose email case last week, and that's the case that's going to tell us how much of your emails and private devices are private and not public, and can't be obtained when you send an email about a public matter to your government entity client, so that case will be the case that we're all watching for, so stay tuned. And lastly, the state sent us a little, something for our stocking, they sent a check in the Caltrans settlement, so we received that yesterday.
Boy, that's, that was, I can't wait for her.
He was holding it for me, wasn't he? Wasn't it like right here? This happened a little while ago.
Well, so, before, so we're now closed on that Caltrans issue?
We are.
We're completely done, right?
On the litigation, we are. Rob just got some more.
Yeah, we have not yet repaired the sewer, we are working with the city on them finding a replacement pole.
Okay, all right, this is that one, about the San Jose decision, whether it comes back, will it result, be retroactive or just going forward?
Oh, I think it will be just a statement of, declaration of what the law is, and it'll be backwards and forwards.
Okay.
It's not like it's an ex post facto law, they're just telling you what the law means, so, yeah.
Do you think there are a lot of public officials cleaning out their email folders as we speak?
Could be happening.
Who knows? Thank you. All right, now we'll move to local meetings, Jim.
Orange County San District, Greg. Seaborn, is the mayor of Fullerton, was elected chairman of Orange County San District. John Withers and Dave Solinger are both nominated for vice president, and we gave them a month to put out their.
Can't hate their turn.
And try and convince us to vote for them, so we'll see, see how that goes. Both of them are good guys, though, and we're in pretty good shape with them.
Do you make that bill as our representative?
Yes. Yeah, there's 25 board members that. Hold on. The other thing is, you know that building we bought in Stanton, oh, 10 years ago, anyway? The staff brought up, they wanted to improve it, put improvements in for ADA purposes, it's leased, and the guy's at the end of a five-year lease, and it's going to re-up, and, you know, it's an industrial use, I mean, it's like putting earrings on a pig, in my opinion, and, you know, they, they're going to look apart again at it, because they're talking about, put 2.4 million dollars in it, the damn thing ain't worth that much, I don't think, but, so I don't know where they're coming off on that, but we're going to sort it out, we'll probably end up keeping it, keeping it the status quo there. I would, I'd say.
The building, they can really modify the corrections.
Yeah, 70,000 square feet at one point, five years ago, they wanted to knock it down and build something, you know, and I just went to ZIRK, I said, and build something like 25,000 square feet, they said, how do you think these things are, right, per square foot? I mean, I don't care if it's brand new or what, I mean, anyway, they, they didn't do that, so. Also, that Rich Gordon, the Menlo Park representative, is a friend of mine, and I went to high school with, that measure that he introduced got passed, you know, for the drinking water to be given away, of all things, I mean, it's kind of crazy, but you had to, they had to have a bill to allow the Orange County Water District to give away drinking water to, you know, promotional, for promotional purposes. So we just ran it like that, that was about it.
Okay, thank you. Second, no, I'm beginning today. Is that, I'll ask the second meeting, basically, was to approve the calendar for next year. The speaker for the January 26th meeting and quarterly meeting, Governor Michelle Steele speaking, and we just had, not too long ago, but since she's the newly elected chairman of the board supervisors, the incoming president, it was important to have her there to speak, so she will be the speaker. That was really it. We made a quick meeting, so, when is the meeting? January 26th. Is that sound right now?
Yes, it does.
CSDA, report for CSDA.
Actually, there isn't too much. In January, I go up there again, and yes, we'll be our new president, and our whole new board will take over, and of course, I was being elected for secretary, so I was still on there, I'm executive, and that's about it.
And SCRMA, no report. We have our first board meeting, January 4 and 5, we can say Thursday, so I'll get the second now, and the fourth, and fifth, for that. Other meetings, I'm going to report out two. I'm going to report up two, two meetings. One that Scott and I had here with Gilmett. Do you remember what's it? Ed Gilmett. Mr. Gilmett is an advocate for some changes at Mesa Water. He was the one that was, the night that the city council approved the resolution to support Measure TT, there was a guy that got up to speak on another issue of Mesa Water. And that's when the big explosion happened, Council of Monahans slapping the diet. Anyway, that was Ed Gilmett. And he presented Scott and I some really interesting things. I think one that was most interesting was Mesa Water buys Gap Water, Green Acres Project Water from OCWB. They pay 500 square, they pay 500 an acre foot for that water, right? Then Mesa Water, in terms of revenue, sells that water to the city of Costa Mesa for $1,000 through an acre foot. So we're looking at that. We're going to have Mr. Gilmett join us at the next Laezon meeting to kind of let Peter, Roger hear some of the things.
The ad hoc committee, not later.
Ad hoc, yes, they have to be. Not the late, no, we don't want you to late. I don't want you to expect.
You use aggregate water, that's okay.
$1,000. So there's, so Mesa's doubling their.
Theoretically, it's just the opposite. They across west to produce that water, they're desert. You know, very sacred ancient situation.
So are they, that would report Mesa loss, be a question. I don't think they sell water to New York Mesa, do they? I'll bet Mr. Gilmett.
There's a number of turnout. Or it's too, could be five clubs, but yeah.
Yeah. But it was a very informative meeting, I think. Interesting gentleman, he knew what he was talking about. The other meeting I'll report to you on is yesterday, or, excuse me, Tuesday. Scott and I, Bob, and Peter, and Roger, that was Charlie Wilson from LAFCO. Scott, Bob, and I chatted with him a little bit about issues and things. Give a tour of the building, and we had lunch with Peter and Roger. I thought it was an extremely productive meeting. I learned more about Charlie than I know before. And I think he will be an important piece of our talks with LAFCO. It was productive enough that we've talked about, over the course of the next several months or whatever, or whatever, we're going to invite all the LAFCO commissioners to come and see the building and talk to them. And Roger and Peter were really helpful, especially Roger, because he and Charlie used to work together. He has some company. And it was interesting. Charlie kind of talked to us a little bit about each LAFCO commissioner and where their interests were and what their priorities were, you know, in terms of all this. And he said, he thought it was a good idea to have all the LAFCO commissioners come and take a look at the facility, look at what we do. He said, but don't bother with the alternates. He said, they don't have any voting capacity.
They don't need jet vessel, do they?
I probably.
Yeah.
There's two, two alternates. So we're going to talk about that at the next ad hoc committee meeting, about setting up a schedule for getting these. It was an interesting meeting that we discussed.
Yes.
That was good.
I had the opportunity to talk with Cheryl, our brothers.
Very good.
And I was chatting.
Very good. Any other meetings?
Four was intended, probably five. Jim, I saw the city council, especially for changing the offices. It was a great experience for me because the place was packed with citizens. Standing room only. Yeah, it started at 5:45, and it started at 5:00. There were some really nice things said about the incoming city council member, the re-elected city council member. And I think the city council is going to be more proactive in the wishes of the citizens, which I think is great. It was a great experience for me. I don't feel like I'd say that. I certainly.
You had sent a letter also on behalf of the district to Mayor Folling, congratulating her on her selection.
I did want to make a comment on it, too. I think we should send one to the vice mayor, the newly vice mayor, Sandy Guinness. I think it would be beautiful.
Mayor President.
Yeah.
That's what Scott will address.
We sent, we sent all, we sent all of your.
We sent a letter to everybody on the census, yeah. You sent them to elected officials, all of them, they counted.
That's it.
Anything else? Other meetings?
I think most of us attended that Wafer meet. It was, the main thrust was, it's a person, Tom, Dr. Tom John, from the Jefferson Mall, she went over to talk about how they do the seven-day forecast.
Aye.
Chairman, Dr. George there. He was coming next. It was interesting. It was really interesting.
It was very interesting.
It's unbelievable.
I open.
What they can do with satellites and the astronauts. And what they do is all of the data they get, they give to everyone in the world at once for free, for free, you know, which is pretty good. The other countries should do that. It's a pretty good.
So we're able to spend hours.
At that point, I was climbing Mount Rodeo with a young man who developed a software program to intercept NOAA information. And that's what you now see projected on the weather stations. He sold that, he sold that for a million bucks, a software package.
1980.
It was 1983.
And so, you know, what you see now, using weather forecasters, well, they're available for, he figured out a way to get that data.
That's great. Okay, no old or new business this evening? Oral communications, any directed comments? Jimmy, what?
I just like to make sure to get something on the diversion rate from CRNR and our staff at the near future study session. I like the information that's on the website, but, you know, we promised publicly that we'd be near 75% diversion with this program. So I'd just like to see if the markets were making towards getting to 75% and/or begin to do strategic planning for how we're going to beat that 2020 mandate. It's not too far away. And then, and the president would lobby for having EDC there to discuss the grease control.
Did we discuss at our last study session that our bid rate of diversions increased to post 70%? That's what I, 72%?
Well, we.
75?
72, right. But I can't remember.
Well, it was a number.
Yeah, we received some numbers from CRNR, but I think I mentioned last study session, there's a lot of questions I have for CRNR. And my, my plan was to present the diversion to you on your January 10 study session. But Deena informed me a lot of the staff members are on vacation this last couple of weeks. So I'm going to have to present it to you in the February study session. I won't have any time for you on January.
Do you think their numbers are close to what they have received?
You know, again, it's hard for me to tell because there's just, there's numbers in there that just doesn't make sense to me. And I just need some explanations from them.
Yes, I just want to congratulate Harry and also Harryman because I think it's so great that we're all together again. It's a team, and we are a team. And I'd like to congratulate you as the president and you as the vice chair.
Staff seconds that motion.
Well, you know, we're, Jim, Jim talked about earrings on a pig. The only reason why we're less stupid is because of the folks that are standing out there right here, really. Thank you.
I received a client from the sanitary district. My brother passed away the 14th of December. And he was 67 years old, just a wonderful guy. I know you guys, some of you guys.
He was the jewel of a very good family, I think.
That's really something. No, he was, he was a great guy. And he was just infectious, laugh, just a rock giver. He was my brother, and he was good, so.
All of us, all of you, all of us. I would just thank you, the four of you, for your trust in me. And I think we're making some really good strides this year. I think we have a lot to be proud of. We have staff to be proud of. We certainly have a building to be proud of. I appreciate the support for, for, for moving forward. I would wish the staff all a very happy, whatever, whatever holidays, you know, you're not supposed to say Merry Christmas. I'll say Merry Christmas. Happy Hanukkah, happy Kwanzaa, happy, what's the other one? The next one?
Happy Yom Ha'atzma.
Happy, whatever, whatever you're celebrating, make sure you celebrate it safely, peacefully, with family, because that's really what this is all about. Absolutely. Thank you for keeping an eye on us, friends. We certainly do appreciate it. Okay, if there's nothing else, then I won't, I'm going to say Happy New Year, I guess, please. Who's in charge when you're gone, gentlemen?
I.
Good to know. Alright, with that, we will adjourn.
Alright. Good job to you, sir.
In the lobby, are these recycled?
Recycled pens? Are they art pens? I believe that they are.
We're going to.
I didn't order those ones. They're ours.
Okay.
And so we can get that signed.
So we have that.
Right.
Okay, hang on, I'll be right there.
We got Diana on it.